Testing, testing.
Fellow commissioners, our manager Bruce Swingle, our acting clerk this morning, Dawn, I would like to welcome everyone here to our regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 22, 2021. It is now 9:00 a.m. I will call this meeting to order. Madam clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Here.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Here.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Here.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Here.
Chair by thumb.
Madam mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item B, Silent Meditation. At this time, I would like to ask everyone to please join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item B3, The Fledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Aragon, would you please read us in the flag?
Yes, we face the flag, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of its citizens, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is before the approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Forster will make a motion to...
Before you make the motion, I have two items that need to be removed. The first item is F2, which is the repeal resolution 18-20... 19, and G9, which is the Main Street. And with those, I will stand for an approval.
Commissioner Forster will make the motion to approve the agenda as noted.
Commissioner Baca, what's second?
I have a motion, and a motion made by Commissioner Forster and seconded by Commissioner Baca to approve the agenda as noted with the removal of F2 and G9. Madam clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is a presentation, and it gives me great privilege, pleasure, and honor to, on behalf of their pro tem Forster, my fellow commissioners, the City of Truth or Consequences, to present this award, a certificate of appreciation to Linda Di Marino. Linda, can I get you to stand up here for a minute, please? As everyone knows, Linda Di Marino has been our executive director for Main Street. I am going to go ahead and read this letter of... This is a press release that was sent to me by Mary Alice Holmes, and it sums up Linda very well, and I think it adds to a lot of her accomplishments. I've also got another list of accomplishments that I will be adding to there, so please bear with me at this moment. Truth or Consequences, New Mexico. September 8, 2021, Main Street Truth or Consequences announces today that Linda Di Marino has officially resigned her position as executive director effective September 15, 2021. Linda has diligently served the Main Street Truth or Consequences organization since 2009, first as its founding president and for the last eight and a half years as executive director, which makes her among the longest-serving executive directors in the history of New Mexico Main Street. As the president of the Board of Main Street, Linda develops a strong organizational foundation that exists today. Her leadership helped to establish Main Street Truth or Consequences as a not-for-profit organization, which then allowed Linda to pursue grants to develop many of the downtown projects that residents benefit from today. Over her career as executive director, Linda has been responsible for more than $1.7 million in funding that has been awarded to the downtown district. Among many accomplishments, Linda was responsible for the awarding and management of grants for customer service training, a process that was attended by nearly 100 TRC residents. She also developed and coordinated the Business Development Speaker Series, and most importantly, developed and expanded Old Fashioned Christmas to include the Parade of Lights. Among other accomplishments, Linda led the Healing Waters Club of Development, was awarded $70,000 for the Foch Street renovation project for design and planning, got the city branding efforts started, which will result in cohesive marketing in the TRC, wayfinding signs, the city tourism website, and relocation guide, coordinating the monthly Second Saturday Art Hop and trick-or-treat downtown, wrote and received an AARP grant that paid to replace crumbling sidewalks in the downtown area, assisted in over 20 building facet improvements, coordinated the Deck of Cards project twice, which featured dozens of our local artists, helped businesses navigate resources and grants during COVID shutdowns, made an improvement around the state by sharing her knowledge of grants to other Main Street communities. Her vast experience at the helm of Main Street TRC has led her to be called upon by the New Mexico Main Street to speak at conferences around the state on a variety of topics, including economic development. Linda has been responsible for aiding many new business owners to get started in Truth or Consequences, from navigating the permitting process to developing marketing plans to training new employees through the aforementioned customer service training. Linda's dedication and devotion to Main Street Truth or Consequences have helped. Truth or Consequences have helped to create an award-winning Main Street organization that has a stellar reputation throughout New Mexico. While Main Street TRC must regretfully accept her resignation, Linda will be pursuing an exciting new career opportunity and will allow her to... That will allow her to stay local and remain one of the Truth or Consequences' most active and engaged residents. And it gives me great pleasure this morning, and among all of her accomplishments, Linda has been a great asset to our community. She always hits the ground running. She's not afraid to accept challenges, and she's done a fantastic job. So I'm here to present this award, this letter, certificate of appreciation, presented to Linda Di Marino. The City of Truth or Consequences recognizes Linda Di Marino for diligently serving Main Street since 2009. Linda was the founding president and served for eight and a half years as Main Street's executive director. We commend you and wish you every success in your future endeavors. Dated this 22nd day of September of 2021, signed by myself as the mayor and Bruce Swingle as our city manager. Congratulations. Thank you. Commissioner Aragon?
Yeah, I'd just say something very brief. If I could describe Linda in three words. Tenacious, passionate, unreachable, all on steroids.
That doesn't just sum it up there, though. Congratulations again, Linda, and thank you for all you've done for our community.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda this morning is public comment. Again, I remind everyone about the three-minute rule. If you have any documentation that needs to be presented to the commission, please put it in the box next to the podium right there. At this time, looks like we have Sophia up.
Sophia Peron, electric customer, water customer, et cetera, in Truth or Consequences, and homeowner. All right, in this last month, everybody who pays an electric bill, they send 3,800 bills that get sent out, got this tri-state Truth or Consequences press release written in July, on July 22, 2021. An equipment replacement project in TRC and M. Construction on roughly a two-mile stretch of a 115-kilovolt transmission line will commence September 27 along Ash Street, from First to Ninth Streets. This effort will include multiple tri-state construction vehicles, line workers, and traffic controllers. Crews generally work from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday. The rebuild will occur September 27 through September 30, and again from October 11 to 21st. As part of the rebuild of the transmission line, we will have two planned outages for the city, for the total city, electric outages. What time? And they're not guaranteeing that the power's going to go back on afterwards. It's up to the electric company to inform its customers that these things are occurring. I saw my neighbor two days ago, he's on oxygen at night, he didn't know a thing about it. He threw this thing right out, this piece of paper, it's not in the newspaper, it's not on the web, it's not even on stupid Facebook. You haven't put it out anywhere. So I'm putting you on notice, Mr. Boaz over there, that if somebody dies or something bad happens, this whole city is liable for it because they couldn't get this word out to people. Nothing. It's pathetic.
Was that an angry electrical bill?
It was... A lot of people are tenants. Excuse me, Mr. Baca. How would they know?
Excuse me.
Thank you for speaking.
Mrs. Peron, you know, me, the commission, and the public, we don't deserve to be treated like this.
That's why we're doing this.
No, we don't.
Those aren't too stupid to sign up to.
Wait, you know, excuse me, but I don't feel that we deserve this, and neither does the public.
I'm sorry.
And neither does the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, also, I'd like to remind everyone, if you have a cell phone on you, to please either put it on vibrate or turn it off so that it doesn't ring while we're in session here. Thank you. All right, the next person I have on my list for public comment is Mr. Rick Dumier.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Rick Dumier, 0105 Charles Street, Truth or Consequences. Once again, 052122, my favorite topic. Guys, you know, it's interesting, the $50 charge for those meters. I don't know if you've seen our city rate charge, our rate fees, and I've been trying to get this... First of all, there's an $8 charge under electrical for residential. No one seems to know what it's for. It's just a customer charge. We all pay it every month, $8. No one can really tell me what it's for, other than that it's part of the bill. Okay, fair enough. The $50 you guys want to charge for not having a smart meter, you only charge $31.47 to come out and pull the trash and dump the trash, okay? On water, we're charging... On sewer, we're charging $16.54 a month for whatever we do with the sewage, and that's based on our water rates. And our water rates, the base charge is $15.50. I got to assume somewhere in there is a meter reading fee. Common sense tells me the $8 is part of the meter reading fee, too, for electrical. No one can confirm or deny that, however. No one really knows what the $8 is for, just that it's a customer charge. No one knows when it was established, but it's on our rate sheet. And yet, somehow, we came up with a $50 fee to have people come out and read an electric meter. That's probably already been charged on our electric bills. We've probably been paying it all along. If not, and if no one can tell me what the $8 is for, can I get my $8 back for the last three and a half years I've been paying it? Because it's a charge that no one knows what it's for. I mean, it's just ludicrous, guys. Please, let's work together. Take a look at it. It's very interesting.
OJ Heschler.
Hey, good morning, Mayor Whitehead, Commissioner, City Manager Swingle. My name is OJ Heschler, Community Service Director. The reason we're here this morning is to promote a cat adoption event at the animal shelter. We will also be holding more events like this in the future to find dogs and cats for future homes that ended up at the shelter through no fault of their own. We have been working towards establishing relationships with animal support groups, volunteers, and foster homes to better support shelter operations. I'd like to thank SARS for their support in the spaying and neutering program that has already contributed to the spaying and neutering of over 17 cats and a couple of dogs in recent weeks. It's been a pleasure working alongside Tara Manning, our shelter supervisor, as we continue working towards improving animal shelter operations. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Tara to give us the specifics on the adoption event.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and members of the community. My name is Tara, and I'm the supervisor at the TRC Animal Shelter. First, I would like to thank everyone for their ongoing support. Our community is amazing, and with your help, we have been able to find owners of many stray animals by promoting the animals and by promoting the animals that we have up for adoption. I would also like to thank SARS for their continuing contributions to the shelter on helping us get animals fixed. Second, I would like to share that the animal shelter will be holding a half-price adoption event on cats and kittens starting today, Wednesday, September 22 through Saturday, September 25. Instead of charging our regular price of $50 for cats and $35 for kittens, we would be charging $25 for cats and the $17.50 for kittens. We also have several puppies and dogs ready for adoption that we are trying to find homes... Or, excuse me, trying to... If cats and kittens aren't what you're looking for. We currently have 15 cats and 13 dogs at the shelter, trying to find their forever homes. Based on the age of the animals, they have all been fixed and received their shots. Come by the animal shelter this week and help us find their wonderful forever homes for these animals.
And the address of the animal shelter is?
1101 North Sike Cedar, Building C.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be posting cute pictures on Facebook to lure people in, so... Also, we're going to talk with the radio and see if we can get it to put on the radio as a public service announcement, so... Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, guys. Commissioner Forster?
And I also want to say that I do also see the pictures all the time that you guys post, and it makes me want to go get more dogs, which I don't want to do.
And I got there real quick. Okay, the next... Thank you all. The next one is Aragon. Aragon Trahio?
Thank you for allowing me to address you this morning.
Thank you.
I had a conversation with Bruce Swingle yesterday afternoon, and he told me that the recent selection committee, composed of three individuals, selected a lawyer, selecting a lawyer for the city, that he qualified as a subject matter expert on the committee. The two other individuals serving on the selection committee, unless I'm mistaken, were Tracy Alrodes and Angela Torres, the city clerk. I thought Tracy was the community development director. I was wrong, but I just found that out. There are common definitions for the term "subject matter experts." A subject matter expert is a person who has authority in a particular area or topic. A subject matter expert has a deep understanding of a particular topic and can improve products, solve problems, or meet technical challenges. The subject matter expert provides knowledge and expertise in a specific subject, business area, or technical area for a project or a program. Given those definitions, I plug those on the internet, Bruce is not a qualified SME for selecting a lawyer. He's not a lawyer. He doesn't have that expertise as a lawyer. You, as our commissioners, have the authority and indeed the responsibility to ensure that the personnel policies being followed by the city will yield qualified employees. As such, it's incumbent on you to ensure that the written personnel policies include subject matter experts in our employee selection committees. You cannot be a master of all topics. You all right now have the ability to change the way the city has been selecting people, and you can do it in a positive way. I mean, we're not state-of-the-art for the way we do selections. We are not, and we can do a lot better. It's up for approval again today, the personnel policies. How many of you commissioners have really read every word in there? Because you're responsible for every word in there and the intent of them. You know, you're shaping the future of the city by your decisions on the personnel policy. I believe that totally. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and the next person for public comment, Dawn is going to go and get him to bring him down. He is hearing impaired, so please bear with us.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Are you sore?
I'm sorry?
Are you sore?
No. Tell it... Giving your name, telling your Dawn.
I am Dawn.
Are you? Are you sure?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Yes, I think so. A little nervous.
I think you're lying.
Good morning, how are you? Thank you.
My name is David Conant of 217B Cedar. I sent this letter to the mayor six months ago and asked Bruce to share it with the city council. I have not heard back from the mayor or anybody else on how corrupt you city council people are. I wonder why I haven't heard back. I know the postal service doesn't screw up their job. Why y'all screw up? I don't know. I know she didn't get it. Postal service doesn't do screw up their job that much. I've sat there and watched these people sit here and talked about how y'all don't do y'all's job. It just goes to show, y'all don't do their job. The mayor states that I want... Would like to see y'all do, make a report card, send it out with the electric bill, have a third party grade y'all, so y'all don't grade yourselves, so that people will know how you are doing your job. I've been to this... Moved here almost nine years ago. I called TRC, Truth or Consequences, and people wondered why I kept doing that. I learned that this was called TRC, Truth or Consequences. I found out it's not called TRC. It was called Trashed and Corrupt. And I've learned that more and more, that's exactly what it stands for, trashed and corrupt. If I could afford to move, I would. I would put my happy ass back in Louisiana. I would really like to know what I can do to help make this Truth or Consequences and less like Trashed and Corrupt. And I had asked in the letter to please let me know what I can do. I'm still waiting for a response. So I came to this meeting, now I would like a response from somebody. A letter. You can't call me because I can't hear. So I would like a letter from somebody or everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coos.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to give public comment that didn't sign up on the list? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tanis Bowers, and I live on Sixth and Foch. And I'm liking to find out, how do we access information about people running for local elections? Is there some kind of forum where all the different candidates are going to meet and discuss their opinions and what their strategies are? And I also would like to know how I get a copy of the city's comprehensive plan, please? Written, not online, if possible?
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah. Can I get an answer?
We don't... We don't respond to public comment at this time. At this time, we're only hearing public comment, and we do not respond to public comment, but we will take all public comments into consideration, and we will be getting back to you, or we will be responding at a later date.
Okay, my phone number, I will give to you, please. I would appreciate a call. 894-3798. And in addition, since I'm up here then, and you are redoing your employee manual, I would really recommend putting something in there where the policies and procedures of the city take into account the ramifications of possible climate change. I live on Sixth and Foch, as I said. I see city trucks go back and forth, so many different kinds of city trucks, so many different trucks just repeating the same route back and forth throughout the day, it looks like. And I think some different planning and strategy in that direction would really be beneficial to the whole city and maybe even further. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? Ariel? No, you didn't sign on.
Okay. At the last meeting of Ariel Darkertie Cabai Road, at the last commission meeting, a new member of our committee, Mr. Bowers, community, rose to encourage collaboration. He noted that we citizens possess many skills to improve our circumstances and fix problems we face in our city. I wholeheartedly agree. It is in your hands, Mayor and Commissioners, to embrace the input citizens offer and to foster tranquility for our city. On the issue of the city's personnel policies discussed in the public hearing September 8, there were many nodding heads among the commissioners, that the considerable contributions from Adon Trahio deconsidered. He provided you a book. You projected that he would be called upon to weigh in and provide his many years of experience in finalizing the personnel policy. Did that happen? Simply no. That proposed policy item 3, F3, is getting on your agenda today. Are deliberations and input of the last meeting incorporated? Please table the issue for further input with Mr. Trahio. Item G2 is a contract approved for almost $1.2 million for the new transformer. Isn't this the issue that you all brought to the last meeting to have a loan from the New Mexico Finance Authority? Such a loan cannot have been approved yet. I recommend you wait to sign this contract when the necessary fundings are actually in place. The RFP process for a lawyer is deeply disappointing and disturbing. Item G3 and 4, three weeks is not a sufficient bid time for a complicated application process. It is no wonder that only three applicants responded, a very poor response, in my opinion, especially as two-thirds of the applicants have already been working for the city. I call into question the city's outreach process. Mr. Rowe only had direct input from one of the evaluators, which challenges the fairness of the process. What are the legal backgrounds of any of the three city employees in making this recommendation? Nada. As you, as a commissioner, are going to need fresh legal eyes as you tumble into deeper problems in the future. Water leaks abound throughout the city. It is very disturbing. Most of us can get by without some electricity. We cannot survive without water. Water is life. Last, what on earth have you... Has the city... Has been in the city's head to craft a bizarre and untruthful, unsigned page, full-page ad in the Sentinel last week? Here is a corrected version of the untruths. You see all this paint?
Thank you, Ariel.
They're not, they're not...
Thank you, Ariel.
Attach it to the...
Is there any other public comment at this time? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. This morning, the consent calendar consists of two items. E1, City Commission Regular Minutes of September 8th, 2021, and E2, Accounts Payable for August 2021.
Mr. Baca will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forrester for the approval of the consent calendar as noted with items E1 and 2. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Right, so are you still with us? Nope, she's gone. Okay, motion carries for... All right, the next item on our agenda this morning is item E1, ordinance E, ordinance is resolutions in zoning, no, excuse me, F, is ordinance is resolutions in zoning, F1, Discussion Action Resolution Number 222122, Budget Adjustment Resolution. Carol Kirkpatrick, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, Mr. Swingle. We are submitting budget adjustment requests as per your packet. The first one is to add $20,000 to the sanitation budget. They had budgeted to purchase a new trash truck. By the time we budgeted and get to this point, of course, the prices increased significantly. So we would like to use their cash balance to supplement that and increase that amount available. The second one is for lodgers tax. Main Street was actually awarded $45,000, and the original budget, we only budgeted $35,000, so we need to increase that by 10. The state fire fund, whenever we do our budget in March, April, we're projecting what the award is going to be, and then we get the final award notice. So it was $17,604 less than the original thought amount, so we're going to increase that revenue. And then we need to budget their entire cash balance, so an additional $272,625. That is a total cash fund, so we want to give him every opportunity to have access to this funding as needed. Stand for any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission?
Commissioner Forrester makes the motion to approve F1 as noted.
Mr. Baca will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval of F1, Resolution Number 222122, Budget Adjustment as noted by our finance director, Carol Kirkpatrick. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna? Nope. Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. The next item on our agenda is F3, Discussion Action, Approval of Ordinance Number 719, Personnel Policy for the City of Truth or Consequences, New Mexico. Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. What you have before you is the, what we consider to be the final draft of the ordinance for the personnel system, personnel policy. Swingle allows municipalities to establish a personnel merit system for the hiring, promoting, discharge, and general regulations of municipal employees. The city has a right and a responsibility to the taxpayers to set professional ethical performance standards for behavioral health, for behavioral expectations for the employees and staff. This policy is an extremely good one, notwithstanding the comments that you heard today and in our last meeting. I think I discussed with each of you kind of the concerns and the issues with some of the add-ins that were recommended. Clearly, these are not comments of somebody that is involved in HR or has experience at it. I strongly suggest that the commission approve this policy today. It is a very good policy, it is light years ahead of what we currently have, which is in violation of law in several sections of the personnel policy, much of it we cannot follow because it's in violation of law. So this is current and correct with case law as well as court decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Aragon?
Yes, you know, I've heard a lot of, I've been getting texts asking for the law over this, and I've talked to Bruce, probably three things I'd like to say. Number one is our personnel policy was archaic, the one we had, that many years old it was. Number two, the people that worked on it, Bruce, that old 10 years, is a county and city commissioner, and he's taught this stuff. So we're talking about people with expertise. And third, it's a living document. Anything that Bruce thinks needs to be changed due to law or reasonableness is going to happen. So let's stop with, you know, the naysaying and move on and get it done. This is light years ahead of what we had. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Aragon. Is there any other comments?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, you kind of reminded me of something, Commissioner Aragon. This isn't just an improvement on the existing policy, this is contemporary to the best practices that are out there. And that's all I really need to say.
Thank you. Attorney Rubin?
Yeah, I just want to make a procedural observation. As you know, we had this on the agenda last meeting, and we already had our public hearing. And as you know, we allowed Mr. Trujillo to submit his suggestions, recommendations. Mr. Swingle and I went through them, and we don't feel that there's anything in the suggestions that would warrant us making any changes to the proposed order. Therefore, the order you have in front of you now is the same one you had in front of you two weeks ago. That being the cases we're not suggesting changes, I don't think you have to go through the process of another public hearing. So I think we can go straight to the final adoption today. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin. Are there any other questions this morning?
Nothing I want to stand on myself. I read the thing, and I thought it went so good. I don't have any confidence whatsoever, just because we don't go along with somebody's ideas of how this is going. But anyways, on that, I couldn't leave it.
Thank you. Commissioner Forrester?
Madam Mayor, I think at last meeting, we suggested that Mr. Trujillo turn in this stuff and that we would examine it, which I feel like you guys do, did, and it didn't fit what we needed. And I think you've done your background and due diligence to ask the department heads and come up with a really good personnel policy that needed changing. So with that being said, I will make a motion to approve the new ordinance 719 Personnel Policy.
Mr. Baca will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval of ordinance number 719 Personnel Policy for the City of Truth or Consequences, New Mexico, as noted and updated by Mr. Bruce Swingle, our city manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna? Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item F4, Discussion Action, Resolution Number 232122, Approval of Procurement Policy. Manager Bruce Swingle.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. This policy applies to all expenditures for the City of Truth or Consequences for procurement of tangible personal property, services, and construction. The purpose of the personnel policy are to provide for the fair and equitable treatment of all persons involved in public procurement, to maximize the purchasing value of public funds, and to provide safeguards for maintaining a procurement system of quality and integrity. This policy, this resolution is consistent with state law, in fact, in mere state law and the state requirements for procurement. The city's really never had a procurement policy in place historically. We've had policies on various components of it, but we've never had a very comprehensive policy. So this is what's being recommended to the city.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Attorney Rubin, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Swingle, as Madam Blackley mentioned, that adheres to state law. If you look at any particular section in this policy, there's actually a state statute that's referring, for example, paragraph 1, Application Code, 1032-1-30, that's a state statute. So you'll see it throughout the policy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baca will make a motion to approve Resolution 232122.
Commissioner Forrester will second it. I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forrester for the approval of Resolution Number 232122, Approval of the Procurement Policy as noted and presented by City Manager Bruce Swingle. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Nope.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item F5, Discussion Action, Resolution Number 242122, Approval of Risk Control Program. Manager Bruce Swingle.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. What you have before you is a risk control program to replace our existing safety policy. Our safety policy that we have is, it's a bit dated, it was created in 1988, and a lot of things have changed since then. But this doesn't just address safety, this addresses the total risk management, risk control efforts of the city to protect its assets, protect the public, our capital, our human, and our financial resources. Staff's recommendation that the commission approve this policy.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Attorney Rubin, do you have any questions or comments?
No idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Baca will make the motion for Resolution 242122.
Commissioner Aragon will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Aragon for the approval of Resolution Number 242122, Approval of Risk Control Program as noted and presented by Manager Bruce Swingle. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna? Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item is G1, or G, new business, G1, Discussion Action, Award Recommendation of Proposal, RFP, Number 202102, excuse me, for the North Transformer Replacement. Recommendation of award is to American Electrical Testing. Carol Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, Mr. Swingle. It's unfortunate that everybody doesn't stay after their comment to listen to the details, but I do want you to know a lot of thought does go into these processes, a lot of hard work, I know, because I'm the one who's been doing it. But we are recommending the award go to American Electrical Testing. The total amount with gross receipts tax will be 1.1,188,815. And I do want to state that this is pending financing. The contractor is well aware of that, as we are.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission this morning?
Yes.
Commissioner Aragon?
Madam Mayor, Carol, the pending financing is from...
New Mexico Finance.
Should I answer your question? Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns? Manager Swingle?
No, thank you.
Uh huh. Carol, you hit it right on the head with that one. How much people would stick around and actually listen to what they're complaining about. With that being said, I will make a motion to approve G1.
Mr. Baca will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval and award recommendation of proposal, RFP, Number 2021012, for the North Transformer Replacement, as noted by our finance director, Carol Kirkpatrick. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item is G2, Discussion Action, Approval of Contract with American Electrical Testing as a result of RFP Number 2021012 for the North Transformer Replacement. Carol Kirkpatrick, our finance director.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem Commissioners, Mr. Swingle, this is a follow-up to the award recommendation. We have a contract in place ready for you to sign to move forward again pending financing.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
I did go through the agreement, and our provision to protect the city, so I think it's a full contract.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin.
Commissioner Baca will approve, make a motion to approve G2.
Commissioner Forrester will second it. I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forrester for the approval of the contract with the American Eagle Testing as a result of the RFP 2021012 for the Northern Transformer Replacement, as noted by Carol Kirkpatrick. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item is G3, Discussion Action, Award Recommendation of Proposal, RFP, Number 212202, for annual legal services. Recommendation of award is to Jamie F. Rubin LLC Attorney at Law. Carol Kirkpatrick, Finance Director.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, Mr. Swingle, once again, we went through the request for proposal process and evaluation. The evaluation committee did compose of people who use these actual legal services on a regular basis. We do recommend Jamie F. Rubin LLC Attorney at Law.
Thank you, Carol. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
No comment.
Commissioner, I mean, Manager Swingle?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. Going through the procurement process, and we are evaluating the proposals from each of the firms that submitted a proposal. We had a very competent firm submit a proposal, but reading the proposal certainly left a lot of questions on the actual, what the real cost was going to be. They were the low, the low bid. However, when we contacted them, because they had a list of fee schedules, what it boiled down to is, with their firm, if they had a resolution or an ordinance or something that we were requesting, then they would forward that to us at no cost. However, if they had to write it, or if they had to do legal research that they already didn't have, then there would be a fee for that. Well, we're an entire city. You know, it's from law enforcement to utilities, to animal control, the full spectrum of city services. We had no idea what the end of the day, what that cost was going to be. Was it going to be, you know, a quarter million dollars at the end of the day, the fees? And they had no, no way of showing us, explaining to us, what they had in their database and what we could rely on as being part of the initial fee they were going to charge. Our lawyers write in review documents every day. There was no way we could rely on what they had in their database or didn't. That was just not in the best interest of this community or the taxpayers. So we went with, with the next candidate, and that happened to be, you know, Jay Rubin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like you did your background on that, too. That being said, Commissioner Forrester will make a motion to approve G3.
Commissioner Baca will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval of the award recommendation of proposal, RFP Number 212202, for the annual legal services, and the recommendation to award it to Jamie F. Rubin LLC Attorney at Law, as noted by Carol Kirkpatrick, and by Manager Bruce Swingle. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Motion carries, thank you. The next item is G4, Discussion Action, Approval of Contract with Jamie F. Rubin LLC Attorney at Law, as a result of the RFP Number 212202, for the annual legal services. Mrs. Kirkpatrick.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, I promise the agenda is not all about me today, but pretty close. This is a follow-up to the award recommendation you just now approved. These services will be from October 1st until September 30th of next year, if this contract is formed.
Commissioner Baca will make a motion to approve G4.
Commissioner Aragon will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Aragon for the approval of the contract with Jamie F. Rubin LLC. the approval of the contract with Jamie F. Rubin, LLC, Attorney at Law, as a result of the RFP, number twenty-one, twenty-two, oh, oh, two, for legal services, as noted by Mrs. Carol Keppatrick, our Finance Director. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna? Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Motion carries. Thank you.
If I can just make a comment, um, let me just say thank you very much. Uh, as everyone knows, I live in further consequences than I've worked here, than I have in my office here. You can't get a better honor of privilege as a lawyer than to have the community select you as a representative. Uh, so thank you very much. Um, we have a great administration. We have a great commission, great people living here, so I'm looking forward to the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin. The next item is G-five, discussion action, approval of contract with Coughler Law Firm for Miscellaneous Legal Services. Carol Keppatrick.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, Mr. Swingle, this contract is to extend services with, um, Coughler Law Firm from October first to June thirtieth. These are for miscellaneous items that our regular attorney may not handle or need assistance with. So we don't know exactly how much it's going to be, but it won't be the full amount in the contract, I'm sure. Um, suggest your approval, please.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Uh, Commissioner Forrester?
Jay, who do you, who do we normally use? Is this who you...
It's, it's always John Appel. He's with the couple.
Okay, I always tell you, stay talking.
He and I have a really good working relationship, so, uh, I'm recommending this also.
Thank you.
Commissioner Forrester will make a motion to approve G-five, as noted?
Commissioner Baca will second it?
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval of, uh, G-five, approval of contract with Coughler Law Firm for Miscellaneous Legal Services, as noted by Carol Keppatrick, our Finance Director. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna? Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is G-six, discussion action, approval of contract extension with Tech Forty-Five Services, LLC, for Airport Management Services. Carol Keppatrick.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, Mr. Swingle, this is to extend the contract to the airport from October first to December thirty-first. We're working diligently on an RFP. It's a, a rather technical, complicated one, so we're hoping to get that in place, give our vendors out their opportunity to really build their proposal, um, and definitely before December thirty-first. Recommend approval, please.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. Are there any questions from the commission? Manager Swingle, do you have any questions or comments?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, uh, just one comment. This is one of those procurements that, that is very involved. We asked for an extension approximately three months ago to, uh, give time for procurement. We had a vacancy in procurement, so things kind of went to at a standstill. Um, I shouldn't say at a standstill, because Carol was handling a lot of the procurements. However, we couldn't get all of the procurements in that we needed to get done. So we need the extension for time to, um, for this and several other, uh, contracts.
Thank you, Manager Swingle.
Commissioner Baca will make a motion to approve G-six, as noted?
Commissioner Forrester will second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forrester for the approval of the contract extension with, uh, Tech Forty-Five Services, LLC, for the Airport Management Services from October first. The extension is October first through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, as noted by Carol Keppatrick, our Finance Director. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna? Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is G-seven, discussion action, approval of contract extension with Integrated Technologies Group for Information Technology Service. Carol Keppatrick, our Finance Director.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, Mr. Swingle, again, this is a contract extension to get us through December thirty-first. This is another RFP that we're working on and trying to get out and give our vendors time to procure the proposal. So we recommend your approval, please.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission?
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Commissioner Aragon?
I would just say that, uh, integrated technologies is magic. I've worked, worked with it. I deal with them for the city, when I work for the county, they're really super.
Thank you, Commissioner Aragon. Manager Swingle, do you have any questions or comments?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Forrester will make a motion to approve G-seven, as noted?
Commissioner, I will second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Aragon for the approval of the contract with Integrated Technologies, uh, Group for Information Technology Services, as noted by Carol Keppatrick, our Finance Director. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna? Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is G-eight, discussion action, authorizing Code Enforcement Officer Jamie Sweeney as designated representative, uh, to act on behalf of the City Manager and designated zoning official for the enforcement of the municipal code property and building violations. Tracy Alvarez, our Assistant City Manager.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, there's various sections of our municipal code that reference, uh, the property and building violations, whether it is the building inspector or their designated representative or city manager and designated or designated representative to be able to allow entry onto, looking at properties that may be in violation for health, sanitary, you know, draft, and refuse. So at this time, we're requesting that we designate Jamie Sweeney, our Service Enforcement Officer, um, as our, as our, so that she can continue with the violation of, uh, property enforcement. She's been doing a great job. She's on there in the police department, so she has full support, uh, with the police as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Manager Swingle?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. I, I'd just like to acknowledge Jamie. She's done fantastic work in the short time she's been there. Anyone that knows Jamie knew she was going to do a great job in the position. I have absolute confidence in her and, uh, her work ethic.
Thank you, Manager Swingle.
Commissioner Baca will make a motion to approve G-eight, as noted?
Commissioner Forrester will second. Kudos, Jamie.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forrester, uh, for the authorization of the Code Enforcement Officer to Jamie Sweeney as designated representative on behalf of the City Manager and designated zoning official, as noted by, uh, Tracy Alvarez, our Assistant City Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna? Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next items on our agenda this morning are reports, the report. One is the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Uh, I, I have mentioned to you in a phone conversation that, uh, we had an issue out at the, uh, Luis Armiho Dump Station, and we put out information to the public in, uh, Facebook posts that in the interest of the community, the city closed the liquid waste dump station at the Luis Armiho Park due to possible dumping of illegal or hazardous waste into the sewer system. Uh, the site flows directly into the city's waste treatment plant. Thus, illegal or hazardous substances will adversely impact, uh, our state in New Mexico environmental permitting requirements. The dump site is unattended, and the city cannot verify what people are dumping into, into the system. Ultimately, the city cannot compromise that multimillion dollar facility, that plant, uh, nor our permits, uh, by allowing illegal substances. We have no idea what was dumped, but we have had individuals notify us that they have monitored people dumping containers, gas cans, it appeared to be, dumped into, into that, that dump site. Um, not knowing what it is, we just can't compromise the waste treatment plant. So we've closed the plant until we can come up with another plan. Ideally, we're looking for options to create a dump station, a site that can be managed and monitored by staff. So we'd have to relocate it somewhere else. And we're looking at that option right now, where we can find. Um, in the meantime, there are probably other places where individuals can dump. I'm not aware of what they are, other than out at the state park. They can dump there. Um, we'll try to get through this as quickly as we can, but at the end of the day, we can't allow illegal substances being dumped into something that's going to ultimately lead to the waste treatment plant. So I think that's just an important message to get out.
Thank you.
Uh, I want to say kudos to a, a lot of folks. First, I want to say kudos to all of the staff of the city. Everyone's working very hard, very diligently, um, on a daily basis, and they just don't get enough credit for what they're doing. They have very little to work with, very limited resources, very limited funding, and they're all doing the best they can with what they have. But they're all well-meaning individuals, just trying, trying to do the best work they can do. Uh, specific kudos, I want to, kudos to David Johnson. David's been out doing the mosquito spraying. He usually goes late at night and does the mosquito spraying. And I thought that was actually, when I first got here, I thought it was actually a fairly easy process to go through. But there's a lot of environmental issues that he has to, uh, address, as well as communication issues and individuals that they don't want. And, and this has been a problem this year, and probably historically. But if individuals don't want mosquito spraying, David has to stop a certain distance from that residence, and then pass it a certain distance. And it's a very substantial distance before he can spray again. So you have these pockets all over the city where mosquitoes are basically, uh, allowed to flourish. And it's a federal requirement that, that he has to comply with that. Um, so when you have people complaining about mosquitoes, and I do get, uh, a couple of those calls, and I have had a few of those calls, it's, you know, I got to talk to Dave and see, was there somebody in that community, in that area, that was, that not wants spraying? And in, in most cases, the answer is yes. So there's nothing we can do about that. He's, you know, we've had individuals ask to identify who the individual that didn't want it was. We can't do that. We're not allowed to do that. Uh, it's just one of the requirements that we have to comply with. So you do have some areas where it's worse than others, and that is because of the, the lack of spraying in, in a certain area or zone. But David does a fine job. Uh, a lot of kudos. He's doing it in the middle of the night, and he needs to be recognized for that. I can one recognize and appreciate everything that he does and his staff. Uh, the next thing, Wes at the golf course. The golf course is looking amazing. He's done an excellent job. And in the brief time that Wes has been with the city, he's really restored that place back to, uh, many years in, in, to the golf course of glory. And it's just going to get better under his leadership. So very, very pleased with that, and kudos to David, or to Wes. Tracy completed getting the ICIP into the system. It's not as easy as just you're entering data and you're done. The system is, it's very difficult to work with. You're working on it. It kicks you out. You got to start all over. It's a very cumbersome process, but Tracy got it done, and kudos to Tracy. We actually had to get her out of the office to do the work, so she had no other distractions, because it is, it's a pretty intensive process. But kudos to Tracy for getting that done. And, uh, the, the city will benefit from her efforts, for sure. Uh, we had a governing board yesterday for the hospital. Um, finances are looking really good, very pleased with the, you know, the financial outlook of the hospital. The interim CEO started on Monday. Uh, Frank Hucklin, uh, is back. He was a CNO at the, at the hospital for, for a considerable amount of time. Now he's coming back as the interim CEO. Uh, look for nothing but great things from him and his, his leadership team. Uh, we concluded all of our professionalism training of staff, and at least the initial course, it's going to be ongoing. We'll, we'll have, um, updates and refreshed the training on professionalism for all of our staff. But that's complete, and starting next week, we start leadership training with our supervisors. And that will actually, the first class is on the twenty-ninth at nine AM in the redroom at the, uh, Civic Center. And I highly encourage Commissioners to, uh, attend. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, invite you to attend the courses and see what we're educating our staff to and the leadership that, uh, we expect out of our employees and our supervisors. Again, that will be just the first class. There'll be several classes to make sure that we get all supervisors and those that are running programs. Uh, just a reminder to the Commissioners that, uh, the City Electric Co-op's Annual Meeting is on October second at eleven AM. Registration starts, and that will be at the high school gym. Uh, just, you've heard me say this a couple of times, and I think the public needs to hear it ongoing. Um, the city's infrastructure, the water infrastructure, it's old, it's dated. And, uh, the city's, uh, been soliciting millions of dollars a year to make improvements into the water system. However, we still average between fifteen and twenty water leaks a week, and that is, that is not going to change. And we have, you know, the public will call in and say, well, this one's been here two weeks. This one's been here a month. And the street department or the water department has to prioritize. They have limited resources, limited staff, limited funding. They have to prioritize the worst leaks get addressed first. So if you have something that's trickling, you know, a couple of gallons an hour versus a gusher, which is hundreds of gallons a minute, priority's going to take precedence on the, the larger leaks. So we ask the public to bear with us that it didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to get resolved overnight. It's going to take years for the city to get to a position to where it's upgrading its infrastructure, to where we're making some measurable or principal improvements in the water system. Finally, I, I think that it's really important to, to comment that the public, the public comment we hear in commission meetings is not having the desired effect that the individuals making the public comment want. It's tearing this community apart. We heard from the gentleman today about that the city's corrupt. Not one, it's, I mean, give me an example of the corruption, and then I will address it. Anyone that knows me knows it will be addressed. We address problems and issues, and we have a lot of them, and there's no denying that. But we are moving forward to address those problems at, at every level. This extension that takes place in this meeting, and it's their three minutes a thing, it's not healthy for this community. It's not healthy for the government. Um, they comment, well, we only have three law firms submit a proposal. That's better than a lot of our procurements that we submit in it, in this community. We submit RFPs, and it's not uncommon to have three or less respondents in a, in a procurement. When we advertise for vacancies, we don't have a lot of applicants apply. Well, it's, one, it's a nationwide problem in the present climate, but it's, two, it's this crash that goes on in these meetings that why would anyone want to subject themselves to these meetings? It's not healthy. It's not helping. And I hear the comment, we're only trying to help. Maybe initially, that was the intent. We've gone way beyond trying to help to, it's now a mission or a cause to just discredit the city at every level. When you have individuals that have absolutely no HR experience trying to come in and tell the Commissioners and staff what they should do. Eight, they have the right to come in and make their comments, and they did. Those comments were evaluated and determined to be very unhealthy for a personnel policy. There were other comments trying to address a lot of other things that really weren't germane to a personnel policy. Add those into the personnel policy. Well, if it's not germane to a personnel, why would we want to put it in the personnel policy? At some point, I hope they, these individuals recognize unhealthy, how unhealthy this behavior is. And I'll stand for any questions the Commissioners may have.
Thank you, Manager Swingle. Are there any questions from the commission or Manager Swingle? Thank you. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Great job. Uh, Attorney Rubin, do you have a report at this time?
Yeah, I want to just mention that we have the city would recently file a complete described title involving the road report. Uh, as you know, we've been maintaining it for, off and on for, uh, several years. As you know, we've been retaining it far off and on for several years. We've consulted with one of local title companies who felt we had a meritorious claim for, to actually quiet tell itself on behalf of the city, so we started a process, and there is quite a long process involved, there's a publication process, and try and get disclaimers from various entities, but we are beginning the process. So, I'll keep you posted periodically. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin, and welcome aboard again.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baca, do you have a report?
Yes, I've got a couple of things. Mrs. Peron talked about how she didn't know how everybody was going to find out about the tri-state thing.
Any questions?
Yeah, tri-state thing. We actually read the paper from her bill. I'm not sure if she wants us to read it to them too now, or what, or if she's just looking for something else to complain about, but she read the paper from the city bill. Also, we had a gentleman tell us how we were trash and corrupt. I take offense to that, because I don't feel any of us are trash or corrupt, or if you don't like it, move. You know, I love it here, I think the city looks great, we're working on it, we're not perfect. It doesn't make a lot of sense.
Thank you. Commissioner Forrester?
Bruce, you gave kudos to your staff and the employees, and you summed up your report and addressing public comment extremely well, and I want to give kudos to you for being the leader and leading from the front. I think you're doing a phenomenal job, and I think you have more knowledge than people give you credit for sometimes. So, we appreciate you very much. As far as the letter that we got, this is the first time I've seen this letter, and as far as the report card to charge the city Commissioners, I feel like you can do that on, what is it, election date? November 3rd, isn't it? November 3rd. Go ahead with it.
Thanks, Commissioner Forrester. I'm going to let Commissioner Aragon give his report last, so I'm going to go ahead and give my report. I know that Manager Swingle gave a lot of kudos to all the city employees. I would like to, again, give kudos, I think, our city staff, our city employees, our department heads. Everyone is working as hard as they can and as well as they can with what we have, and they too deserve the respect from the public. You know, it's hard. It's hard when you have to make a living, and you have to go to work every day, and you can't be happy, because somebody's going to gripe at you, somebody's going to complain at you, somebody's going to not like what you do, you know? And it's really, it's really weighing down a lot of our employees and a lot of our people. You know, they work very hard to keep our community going, and they deserve respect, not only from us Commissioners, as well as the manager, but from our public. I mean, who else goes out in the middle of the night when they're called, like the police department goes out? If there's a utility outage, or if there's a water leak, I mean, these guys hit the ground at all hours of the night, all hours of the day, all hours, and they can work up to 24, 36 hours without a break. I've seen them. I've watched them, and they do great jobs, whether it's storming outside, the snow in a blizzard, or whether it's raining. I mean, whatever happens, they're boots on the ground, making sure that we, the public, are back up and running and don't have to be without electric for a long time. And I know that Mrs. Peron talked about the outage because of the infrastructure change and whatnot, the tri-state. I'm sure that there's a plan of action, and I'm sure that there's a plan that's in place so that people will not be without electric for very long. I mean, that's just kind of stupid that we wouldn't have a plan in place. I mean, we have a great manager that stays on top of this stuff, and we have great department heads. So, again, like Manager Swingle said, a lot of this public comment is just wearing not only the city, the commission, the management, but our community, wearing them down, our community. People don't want to live here when they, and I talk to people all the time, that, gosh, how do you do that? So, again, we just need to work positively. All it takes is a phone call. I know that, you know, sometimes we get emails, sometimes we don't respond right away. I try to send, as soon as I get an email, I try to send it to the ride department where it needs to go. Again, we need to work together, but instead of pimming up and vashing us, we need to send another email or a call. So, I would strongly appreciate that. In my closing comment, I would like to give kudos to Manager Swingle. You know, he talked about these professional trainings that he's been giving. I know that all the city staff has attended these professional trainings. I attended the very last one, and you know, even though I've been in public service for over 40 years, I learned something new. And so, he did a great job, and I know that he's going to do a fantastic job on his next course of professionalism and training for the department heads. So, again, kudos to Bruce for bringing this on board. I think all the staff really appreciate it. I know that I appreciate it, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you do and where you've brought us to date.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Manager, Commissioner Aragon, are you ready? Report.
Just a few things regarding Jamie Rubin, Attorney Rubin. Once again, this is a gentleman on steroids for being available in your follow-through, Jamie. You do follow through, and you're going to work for the city. I can always trust you, coming back with a response, no doubt about it.
Thank you.
All right, number two, again, I'll chime in and echo everybody's comments about public comments. You know, Mayor Pro Tim, Forrest, and several others said, if you want to make a difference and you think you can, you jump aboard. Election time's coming up, you know, be in the seat we're in, and you might see it. You might not get elected because of some things, but the thing is, try. And the mayor, I appreciate, when someone says something demeaning or unkind, it's nice to know that we have somebody to say something back to that person, because they should be scolded, and we have that opportunity. I don't know how far we can go, Jamie, but I think it's necessary. We just don't need to let it go. And the third thing is, with great feelings, I'm departing. I think maybe somebody don't know this, but today's my last day as a Commissioner, City Commissioner. I'm leaving, I'm going back to Texas. I was called back by the government there. I was served five years as a police chief. It's nice to be wanted, and I was left there in 2015 to go to Alaska, and they asked me about it, and I couldn't pass it up. My wife got here, she couldn't believe it, she's going to attack again. But it's been a great honor to serve the community and the city Commissioner and other things, and I must say, the passion that we have in our commission is incredible. We have a magic manager, city manager, which was the best move we've made in a long time, bringing him aboard. So, with that, my kudos to all of you. Mayor Forrest, Mayor President Forrest, she's got to get up and go, I tell you. Paul, thank you. Mayor, Frances is not here, but she knows how I feel about her. Bruce, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, no further comments.
That's a lot, Jim.
Thank you, yes. That's a lot to you. We've been working with you. All right, the next item on our agenda this morning is, hold on just a second, let me find my agenda. Executive session. We have one item on executive session, which is I-1, the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property pursuant to 10151HA. Do I have a motion that we go into executive session?
Commissioner Baca, make that motion.
Commissioner Forrester will second. I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forrester to go into executive session under the item as noted. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Frances Luna?
Will be in executive session in a few minutes.
Thank you. First, Vanessa, your motion, Jamie? When did you say your petition?
It's on the 29th.